I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's six o'clock. This is a regular meeting of the Township of Washington in accordance with requirements and New Jersey statutes regarding open public meetings. Notice this meeting was legally advertised and occurred post in South Jersey Times at posts on the bulletin board in Municipal Building. Fire exits are located through the double doors to your left and right. Please silence all mobile devices. This meeting is being videotaped. Anyone who wishes to be seen on television may be excused. This will be shown on Comcast Channel 9 every week, Sunday at 9:00 PM, Wednesday at 7:00 PM, and Friday at 10:00 PM, and Saturday at 10:00 PM. We'll continue until the next meeting. This meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube and can be found at WT Productions under the livestream agenda, which is on the Township's official website. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which we stand, one nation, united.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Delapia?
Here.
Mr. Yurkis? Mr. DeBorello?
Here.
Mayor Burns?
Here.
Mr. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Wright?
All right, moving on. Before we give our presentations, there's something that we do here in town. They're actually down now because we hang every mayor's picture up on the wall, and tonight we're going to do the unveiling of Mayor Burns' picture, so we're very excited for this. So Mayor Burns, if you can come down here so we can do your unveiling.
If you know me, you know I write everything down. A year ago, I was honored to be appointed as mayor to fill Joanne Gattonelli's unexpired term. I stepped into this role knowing it would be both a challenge and a privilege, and what an incredible journey it has been. Being born and raised here in Washington Township has always been my home, and serving as your mayor has been one of the greatest honors of my life. Over the past year, I've had the privilege of working alongside so many dedicated individuals: our council members, department heads, township staff, and most importantly, the residents of Washington Township. Together, we faced challenges, celebrated milestones, and worked tirelessly to make our community stronger. One of the greatest joys of this role has been connecting with so many of you. Whether it was at events, in meetings, or just in conversation and passing, your voices have inspired me every single day. Being mayor has given me the chance to see firsthand the heart and resilience of our community, qualities that make Washington Township such a special place to call home. This past year has also been a time of growth and learning for me. I gained a deeper appreciation for complexities of leadership and the importance of collaboration. Every decision made, every initiative pursued, has been driven by a love for this town and a commitment to serve the people. Through my role as mayor, is coming to an end, my dedication to Washington Township will remain as strong as ever. I will always be proud to have the opportunity to serve this community, and I look forward to continuing to support it in whatever ways I can. To my family, my friends, my colleagues, and all the residents who have supported me throughout this journey, thank you. Your encouragement and belief in me have meant more than I can ever express. And as I close this chapter, I do so with appreciation for the opportunity to serve as your mayor. It has been the honor of a lifetime, and I will forever cherish the memories of this past year. Thank you, and may Washington Township continue to thrive and shine as the incredible community that it is. Good evening, everyone. I'm thrilled to be here to congratulate our incredible Dec Hockey League on an absolutely outstanding accomplishment this season. Going undefeated in the 2024 season is not a small feat. It takes talent, dedication, teamwork, and an unstoppable spirit. You're not only made Washington Township proud, but have also shown us the true power of preservation and unity. On behalf of our community, thank you for representing us with such excellence. Here's to celebrating your success and looking forward to many more victories in your future. So can I have the entire team and the coaches come up here? What? Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I apologize in advance if I mess your names up, okay? I have Coach James DiMarco. I really do have it together. No, 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 stay, please. Coach Brian Bernardo. Coach Dominic Sperrero. And then we have our team representative, Julie DiMarco. You'll take it for her. Area O'Donnell. Braden Harrington. Bryce Bernardo. Charlotte Egan. Christian Markovits. Dominic Sperrero III. Dominic DiChilio. Eddie Kinyan. Kenyon. Ellie Bowers. Eli. What is it? It's Eli, right? Yeah. I said that wrong, I'm sorry. Elijah Imperato. Not here. Harper? You want to stay here? Is it Killian Finn? Liam Harrington? Reagan. And Vincent DiMarco. Congratulations.
Don't you think anyone wants to say anything? He didn't want to say anything?
No, I don't want to talk? No? All right, I'll do it. Thank you. We appreciate this very much. It's only a second year. It's just two passions important to utilize, just as, like this town, we need to do. So we were able to put together, we developed a team together. This year, we moved the twenty-three. This year, we have twelve.
In front of the, in front of the, the trophies are in the way of the food. I need to eat dinner, too. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. So tonight's a wonderful night to celebrate the holiday season and the creativity that lights up Washington Township. The light-up-the-town Christmas house decorating contest has become one of our favorite traditions, and this year's theme, Holiday Classic, brought out some truly stunning displays. Before we announce the winners, I want to thank everyone who participated in making this season extra special. Your efforts have brought joy and inspiration to so many in our community. Last Friday, the 13th, Peter and I took a bus along with some of our other residents, and we toured 26 houses that submitted to be part of this contest. And it wasn't easy, let me tell you, to the point where I think I took this little one, my granddaughter, out twice over the weekend, again, to drive by myself to see these houses and try to pick the winners. They were all fantastic, so I applaud everybody's hard work that you put into it. Our first winner up is the Chief's Choice Award. He too drove around the township with his family, looking at all the pictures. And his award went to 60 Goodwin Parkway. If you'd like to come up, it's the very first time you've ever dropped it with the Chief. Yep. Go ahead, you can hand it to them, Paisley. Go ahead. Your display impressed with us its creativity, precision, and holiday spirit. Congratulations on earning the Chief's approval. Oh, the snow? When they saw the snow, they went nuts. Yeah, they did. They did. Next up are our award for Most Original Yard. This display showed us that you went above and beyond to make your yard truly one of a kind. I had a hard time picking this one because I almost made it my mayor's favorite, but it went to 19 Pindale Court. Mr. Chuck Donahue? Pin Oak. I'm sorry, did I say that wrong? Pin Oak. My paper said Pindale, but it is Pin Oak. With the fireplace outside and the Santa Claus. I may have driven by a couple times. You were still putting it out there. Somebody has to, right? The next award is for Best Used Theme. It goes to 228 East Holly Avenue. Your display perfectly captured the nostalgic magic of a holiday classic, beautifully reflecting this year's theme. This contest is a lot of fun because I think it challenges your neighbors to have to compete with you when you put up your lights. But the next one is the Clark Griswold Award for the home that truly went above and beyond with lights and decoration. Your display was nothing short of spectacular, pure holiday energy. And this award goes to 62 Cranford. So the next one is the Mayor's Choice Award. Now, my granddaughter here and I went back and forth over and over again, and I did not pick the one that she wanted. I picked the one that I wanted. So how does this say that this display was my personal favorite because of the whimsical gnome theme? As many of you know, gnomes are my favorite, and they hold a special place in my heart, and this home's festive charm and creativity were simply unforgettable. The winner of the Mayor's Choice Award this year goes to 19 Thornfield Circle. So our last award is the People's Choice Award. Now, they had all weekend to go on and drive by all 26 homes and vote through a Google form that they could submit. And at nine o'clock on Sunday, the answer was revealed that the most meaningful award tonight is chosen by all the residents, and it goes to 1 Palmer Court. Your display captured the hearts of our community, embodying the true spirit of the season. Congratulations. So let's give a big round of applause for all of our winners. But before we end, I'm going to recommend to the new mayor, Anthony, over here, for next year, 2025, and going forward, that we add a choice to the People's Choice Awards, where they go on the Google search and do it, and add to a Kids' Choice Award, so the kids can choose and add an award, because it truly was so much fun with this little one here. And all the kids that took the bus tour with us, they loved every second of looking at these houses. And obviously, her theme, I mean, if I could give it to her to pick, she would have picked 22 Renfield as her honorable mention. That was, my granddaughter's favorite was 22 Renfield. They're not here today because we didn't have a Kids' Choice Award. And I thought about it as I was driving by and had to drive by there five times. Check it out if you guys haven't seen it yet. It is really, a really cool house. All of them are. The list is still up on our website. I highly recommend everybody going by, but I really do think a Kids' Choice, it may get even more People Award. Yeah, add that for, then. So again, let's give a big round of applause to all the winners. Your creativity enthusiasm have made Washington Township glow with holiday cheer. Thank you for participating. We love them all.
Moving on. Can I get a motion to approve the bill list for December 17, 2024?
Motion, second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Delapia?
Yes.
Mr. DeBorello?
Yes. Can I get a motion to approve the regular minutes for November 26, 2024?
Motion, second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Delapia?
Yes.
Mr. DeBorello?
Yes. Moving on to ordinances. We have 0018-24. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 80 of the Code of the Township of Washington entitled "Fees: Disordinance of Her Adoption After Public Hearing." Can I get a motion to open to the public on ordinance 0018-24?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak about ordinance 18, please come up and state your name and address. Seeing none, can I get a motion to close?
Motion.
Can I get a motion to approve ordinance 18-2024?
Motion.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Delapia?
Yes.
Mr. DeBorello?
Yes. Ordinance 0019-2024. This is an ordinance adopting the amended redevelopment plan for the Delsey Drive redevelopment area in accordance with the requirements of local redevelopment housing law, NJSA 040A12A-1. This ordinance is up for adoption after public hearing. Can I get a motion to open to the public on ordinance 19-2024?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak about ordinance 19, please step up, state your name and your address. Seeing none, can I get a motion to close the public on ordinance 19-2024?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve ordinance 19-2024?
I'll make the motion.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Delapia?
Yes.
Mr. DeBorello?
Yes. Ordinance 0020-2024. This is the ordinance of the Township of Washington, County of Gloucester, and the State of New Jersey repealing Township Code, Chapter 216, Streets and Sidewalks, Sections 38 through 41 pertaining to sidewalk maintenance and amending Chapter 179, Property Maintenance and Housing Standards, Section 7, Hazardous and Unsanitary Conditions. Duty of owners and operators to include maintenance of sidewalks. This ordinance is up for public hearing. Can I get a motion to open to the public on ordinance 002-24?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 20, please come up, state your name and address. Seeing none, can I get a motion to close the public ordinance 2024? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve ordinance 20-2024?
Motion.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Delapia?
Yes.
Mr. DeBorello?
Yes. The following resolutions are by consent agenda only, require vote for all listed. Each one must be read by title. If any member of the council wishes to have one removed and heard separately, they need to indicate prior to the reading of the title. Does anyone need anything removed? Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolutions?
Resolution 304, Resolution authorizing the municipal clerk to advertise requests for proposals for 2025 professional services. 305, Resolution authorizing assignment of tax sale certificate number 23-00026 to pause in motion. 306, Resolution amending Resolution 294-2024, canceling taxes for Sarah Oberholzer, Block 239, Lot 8, 914 Forbes Street, effective October 31st, 2024. 307, Resolution authorizing the Township of Washington to accept a subgrant award of the federal fiscal year 2024 of Emergency Management Performance Grant and Emergency Management Agency Assistant. 308, Resolution authorizing a transfer of budget appropriations. 309, Resolution requesting approval of revenue and appropriations from the Department of Community Affairs for the federal emergency management assistance grant in the amount of $10,000. 310, Resolution to close out the Township of Washington's petty cash fund of $500 for the fiscal year of 2024. 311, Resolution authorizing contracts with certain approved state contract vendors for contracting units pursuant to NJSA 40A Colon 11-12A. 312- 312, resolution authorizing a change order from paving plus LLC for FY 2023 NJ DOT Trust Fund, Selina Road Improvement Project OE18T431. 313, resolution approving the release of a maintenance guarantee to Sterling United Properties with Mill Pond Village Center located at 372-386 Lake Harbor Road, block 194.12, lot 7, project OE18K408.I. 314, resolution awarding a contract to the Camden County Educational Services Cooperative to South Jersey Turf Consultants LLC for turf application and service for the Washington Township Soccer Complex. 315, resolution awarding a bid to Charles Marandino LLC for FY 2022 NJ DOT Johnson Road Pedestrian Improvement Project OE18T439. 316, resolution authorizing the release of contract for the purchase of 451 and 453 Herfield Run Lock Road. 317, resolution fixing the salaries, wages, compensation, and benefits for fire commissioners for the Washington Township Fire District Number 1 for fiscal year 2025.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I get a motion to approve resolutions R 304-2024 to R 317-2024.
Motion, second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Delapia?
Yes.
Mr. Deverell?
Yes.
Moving on to old business, new business, and reports. Why don't we start with Mr. Rich Bennett?
Alrighty, um, I'd like to all the res, thank all the residents and the Historic Preservation Committee for the magic with Christmas. I think it was a big success. Um, and again, I think it's an important part of the community, uh, having the magic of Christmas at the Old Stone House gets you a chance to go into the building, see the history, and, and again, and we just love more people to come out. Um, also like to thank my Boy Scouts for helping me over the last five weeks with raking leaves for the seniors in town. So I appreciate that happening. Uh, you know, Lori gave me a list of uh, different uh, seniors who were needy and needed their gra, uh, their leaves taken care of, and I did take care of that with the help of the Boy Scouts. Um, also like to thank Lori Burns for a great job over the last years, uh, working with us to make sure the town is better. Um, just a key thing is with lawn waste, we have to make sure that if you have lawn waste from uh, November 1st to April 1st, that it has to be, you have to go online to put in your address so it's picked up. Uh, we, we don't want to have people continuously having stuff outside on the road and on the street, so make sure that. Or, yeah, or you can call, make sure that your yard waste is picked up. Usually during this time, there's not a lot of yard waste pickup, and the reason why we're doing this is to eliminate unnecessary trucks being out on the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Brown?
Um, I want to thank all those who uh, assisted and set up with the tree lighting. It was a, again, a wonderful event. A lot of people put hard work into it. Uh, nice attendance again this year. Um, can't wait to do it again next year. A lot of things just happened this month with all the Christmas activities. Everybody who's participated, thank you um, for all of your dedication and hard work, um, making Christmas season, the holiday season enjoyable for everybody. Um, nothing from the library this month. Um, getting ready to start the new year. I'm sure they'll have some upcoming events for 2025. I too want to thank Mayor Burns for her term, uh, filling in for Mayor Gattinelli. Uh, it was a pleasure working with you this entire time. We had a lot of fun, a lot of joking around. Um, it was really fun working with you. And to the residents, the employees, uh, my fellow council member and the mayor, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Keep it a safe one. Um, unfortunately, we've had some very serious accidents in town pedestrian wise. Police Department has really been going up and above beyond duty. Um, and let's appreciate our first responders for all that they do, especially during this holiday season. Uh, many of them, their table is in a fire truck or a patrol car or an ambulance, uh, taking care of us while we're home, uh, enjoying ourselves. So keep them in your prayers and um, show them appreciation when you're out there. Thank you.
Mayor?
I put you on the spot. You did, you did. Sorry. But um, I just want to say how proud I am of you. Um, for those that don't know, Lori is, is my sister, and watching her develop into the person she is today has just inspired me, and I'm so proud of you. And I look forward to everything that you have planned for your future, so shine, shine, shine. Just keep on swimming.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council Vice President?
Thank you, Council President. Um, first, I want to congratulate the hockey team. Uh, it was great to have them here. Um, I want to thank Councilman Bennett. One of the seniors did come up to me the other day and raved that uh, you and the Boy Scouts went over, raked her leaves. She said she had a lot of leaves, and you guys did it old school. You guys raked it onto a tarp, drug it to the curb. She couldn't thank you enough. So it's great to see what you and the Boy Scouts do out there for our residents. So thank you for doing that. Um, it is a time of giving. Uh, the tree lighting was great. As the mayor mentioned, Lisa did a great job with the Rangers, Public Works, uh, Nick, Lenny from Dana's Party Rentals who did the, the tent. Uh, it's great to see the community get together for events like that. Um, to all the winners with the decorating of the lights, it, again, those community events are great. Maybe next year we can do a Halloween one, too. Uh, these people do a lot of Halloween stuff, so.
Yeah.
Maybe we could do a Halloween, um, contest as well.
Yeah, I like that.
Um, and we can still do a Kids' Choice. Okay? Um, and also, last thing I want to say is, Mayor, it, it has been an honor. Um, for anybody doesn't know, you know, we ran against each other, but we still kept our friendship, kept our professionalism, and um, you were put in a hard position, coming in cold with a year in front of you, just getting thrown in there. You handled it with grace. You did a great job. It was, it was an honor working alongside you. Um, and I think we've said this before, we gained, I gained a friend. So I wish you the best in everything you do. Thank you for everything you did, and um, you know, we'll see you around, I'm sure. And I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Healthy New Year, and that's it.
Thank you, Council Vice President. So I got a list here. I'll, I'll speak for Jack as well, because I'm sure he had some things. Uh, so yesterday, we, the, the police department put on coffee with, with the seniors, so that was great. If anybody got to see that, we posted on the picture. There, thank you, Chief, and thank you all the officers. That, that was actually a really great event yesterday. Also, congratulations to the girls, uh, Girl Scouts. I was at the Pittman Theater on, on Sunday, and they were there, and we got to spend some time together. So it was nice to see them over there. If anyone's been to the Pittman Theater, definitely take your kids. It really is, is, it's great. We also had a fundraiser for the Minutemen basketball team, which was, was, was a lot of fun. So thank you to Coach and all the people who put that together. That was a, a success. Also, congratulations to two, was it Tutus and, and Tierras? Is that right? Two Tierras and Tierras. What a, what a great concept. So definitely checked out the brand new business here in Washington Township. We were all there for the opening. Congratulations to, to, a big lady, her name is Rose, on that opening. She did a really nice job. Rosie, yeah, it was really, really, it was really good concept. I liked it. I, I think anyone who's looking for something to do with your children or, 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 you know, for a birthday party or as, event, definitely check that out. Rotary did their annual dictionary giveaway to all fifth graders, I believe, all fifth graders, third graders, all third graders got their annual dictionary from the Rotary. So thank you to Rotary. Dave Portney was in town. I don't know if anybody saw that. Slice was, uh, Dave Portney was in town. He gave Slice a 7.4, so it's pretty cool that he was here in town. I know we had talked about trying to get him to town. He just comes in and, and he doesn't tell anybody he's coming, but he was here in town. He did give that. So I think Slice has definitely seen a, an uptick in business. We were there the next night. We, we go there anyway, but it was, it was good. Uh, congratulations to Michelle Pillar. I don't know if anybody saw the, the, um, Washington Township Neighbors Magazine. She was recognized on the cover. So if you don't know them, if you don't know past her and that family, just wonderful people. They just do so many great things for the community, not just Washington Township, but Gloucester County as a whole. So congratulations to them. Had the chance to ride with Jim Connor. If anybody knows Jim, what, what a, what a great, just what a great individual, great human. He, we, we drove together on the fire truck and the Blackwood Parade and the Washington Township Fire Department. Congratulations to them. They won best decorated ladder. So congratulations. It was actually a lot of fun. Jim's a great guy, and we really had a lot of fun together. We also had the Gloucester County Veterans, the Lang of the Reefs. So I was, I was there with, with, with some of the council here as well. Uh, also Stuff the Cruiser was a big success. Chief, again, always thank you so much. The Tucci Agency also did Toys for Todd, and also Lenny and Dana's Party Rental. Congratulations to the Junior ROTC. They got really high remarks. Council Vice President and I were there. Congratulations to the police officers, again. Uh, tomorrow and Thursday, I'll be ringing the bell for the Salvation Army. Anybody at the Deffert Mall, I'm in front of Bosco, so anyone wants to stop by there. And on a, on a personal note, um, oh, also, yes, that's right. Thank you, thank you, Council Vice President. Council Vice President and I and Nancy had lunch Friday?
Friday.
Friday with the owner of Monster Golf. So if anybody has not been to Monster Golf, that's coming here to Washington Township. It's going to be 22,000 square feet of fun. What a great concept. We actually went and saw the one they have in Cherry, Cherry Hill? Cherry Hill. The, the owner, Bob, is, is a great guy, and uh, we're really excited about this. Yeah, laser tags come in. He's got a hole, so we see a lot of team building here in the building. I, I see the fire versus the police coming up. I see some real fun stuff in the, in the future here. So I, I see uh, some of the, some of the teams going out, but really a lot of fun. So a lot of his business is corporate events. So anybody looking for some good team building. And again, on, on a personal note, uh, Mayor, it has truly been an honor to work with you and definitely like, like Council Vice President, it's, it's friend. It was always when you came in, your personality, you wanted to get to work. You, you were just such a great fit for us, and that is the very first key to the city. That, that is the very first one, and, and we're going to give those out sparingly. So you have the very first one, and it's, it's, I truly think of you as a friend. Now, I appreciate your, your dedication and service to the town, and I think I can speak for the whole town. We, we really congratulate you on a job well done. Um, I don't think we ever had a question of that, but you really shined, and we got a lot of good, and, and Council Brown was like, we had a lot of good laughs together. We really worked well together, and I, and I really do commend both of you because I think the election really shows that everyone can work together. It, this town really showed that, and, and just to watch you two work together and to watch all of us, it really was a lot of fun. So thank you so much for that. All right. All right, moving on. Municipal Complex will be closed on Tuesday, December 24th through Thursday, December 26th, in observance of the Christmas holiday. I wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. Happy Hanukkah to those who are celebrating. Municipal Complex will be closed on Wednesday, January 1st, in observance of the New Year's holiday. We wish everyone a safe and happy New Year. And the reorg meeting will be January 3rd at 6:00 PM. So I'm pretty sure the reorg meeting is going, what's that? It's going to be at the, it's going to be at the high school, and the whole town is invited. So please, please come out, bring your families, bring your children. We're going to have, it's going to be a lot of fun, and, and we ask everybody to please come. Now, we're going to move on to public participation. Please follow the public decorum posted. It's been attached to the public agenda and limit your comments to five minutes. Once you've completed your comments or questions, please take a seat, and I'll ask if any member of the governing body or their destiny wishes to address your comments or questions asked by the person who spoke. Can I get a motion to open to the public?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak for the public? Maxine? Sure? You had papers in your hand. I thought you wanted to say something.
Anyone else?
Seeing none? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next council meeting is scheduled for Friday, January 3rd, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Roll call, please. I know, you can do adjourn, but you broke roll call, but I'll, so I'll go with the roll call.
Mr. Bennett? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Delapia?
Yes.
Mr. Deverell?
Yes.
The meeting is adjourned.